Welcome to the Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. Adam, would you please read the role?
Sure thing. Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Here.
Great.
We're all here. Thank you. As is the case every time in the meeting, we have a public comment for that which is not on the agenda tonight. So if you have a comment that you would like to direct to the commission or to the town, and it's not on tonight's agenda, would you please raise the hand? Or you can email into publiccomment@tcnmail.org. Are there any raised hands, Tracy?
There are no raised hands. And I don't see any any emails in our inbox.
Okay. Give it one more beat. Again, anybody that has a comment for something which is not on tonight's agenda, if you would like to make that comment, please raise the hand on Zoom. You can see that icon at the bottom of the screen. Seeing none? Hearing none?
There are none.
There are none. We will close the public comment section of tonight's agenda, and we will move directly to the purpose of tonight's meeting. That is a discussion of the implementation of Objective Design and Development Standards Toolkit, otherwise known as ODS. And this has been a long time coming. Mr. Wolf, you want to start out?
Yeah, I'll just give a few opening remarks here and then hand it over to Martha for the presentation this evening. But I think it has been a long time, a fairly long time since we first introduced this project to the Planning Commission, which I'm trying to remember exactly when it was, but I think it was more than a year ago. Year plus, year, year and a few months and and so at the time, we had just kicked off a multi-jurisdiction. So this is a county-wide effort. We're working with essentially nine other jurisdictions, all the other cities except for San Rafael and Marin County on developing what we're calling this Objective Design and Standards Toolkit. So it's exciting to be at this phase of the project, which is now we have sort of the final toolkit in our hands. And as Martha will explain, that doesn't mean it's it's fixed. Now we have the opportunity to sort of customize it to Corder Madera, and that's going to be our next piece of work. But we thought it was an opportune time to really bring it back to the commission to make sure that all of you are aware of this ongoing piece of work to introduce you to the purpose or reintroduce you to the purpose of this project and some of the work we've been doing with the Technical Advisory Working Group over the last year to sort of get this into the position and shape that we're in today. So with that, unless you have any questions for me, I'll just turn it over to Martha, who's gonna provide you with a presentation. And then we're here really for information and hear any questions and comments that you have. So thank you. Martha?
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair Chase and Planning Commissioners. As Adam mentioned, this evening, staff will be providing you with an update on the Objective Design and Development Standards Project. The commission will also be discussing implementation options for the toolkit, and no formal action will be taken at tonight's meeting. And based on feedback that is received from the commission, planning staff will continue working with the consultant in the working group on beginning the next phase, which is customizing the toolkit for Corder Madera. And the presentation is designed to be more of a discussion. So please, at any point along the way, please ask questions if anything is is unclear. And Adam may also be chiming in as well to add the confirmation. In 2019, the town received an SB2 planning grant. The grant was in the amount of $160,000. And we've been working for the past year plus with several other agencies in Marin County on three different projects, which include the Objective Design and Development Standards, which is what we are discussing tonight, the development of an accessory dwelling unit workbook and website, and a Marin County Inclusionary Zoning Study. And as the commission may recall, several months ago, planning staff provided the planning commission with an update on the ADU project. We showed the website. And since that time, the workbook has been finalized and the webpage is up and running. And it's been a great resource. We refer residents to it all the time that have questions about constructing in ADU. So the purpose of the toolkit is threefold. First of all, addresses both current and future state housing legislation, which limits local jurisdictions' discretion related to multifamily housing projects. In the last several legislative sessions, there have been numerous bills that have removed the discretion from jurisdictions when evaluating projects. And so that kind of underscores the importance of adopting objective standards. So when we receive a project that we have standards that we can use in the absence of a discretionary process. The toolkit also provides the town with tools that will be necessary for a successful housing adoption process. The toolkit includes a lot of great diagrams and information that we feel will help educate the community when we're having discussions about topics such as floor area and density. Those things can be a little hard to visualize and actually having tangible information to show people, we think, would be really, really valuable. And lastly, the toolkit furthers the town-stated housing policy and goals that are included in the general plan. So as I mentioned, there have been several housing legislation in recent years. I'll go over the most notable ones, which is SB 35, SB 330, and the Housing Accountability Act. SB 35 requires streamlined and ministerial approval for certain housing projects. And in instances where it applies, it requires a jurisdiction to quickly approve eligible project. And the town of Corder Madera is currently not subject to SB 35. It is determined through HCD, Housing and Community Development, which jurisdictions are subject to it. And it's based upon the number of building permits that have been issued by jurisdiction to satisfy affordable housing in the particular jurisdiction. So two years ago, I believe it was, HCD evaluated where all jurisdictions in the Bay Area or actually statewide were at in terms of meeting their housing obligations for the current housing cycle we're in. And anyone who was not at halfway point, this legislation applies. So it applies to the majority of jurisdictions in the Bay Area. Corder Madera is currently one of the few cities where it does not apply. So we're not subject through it through 2023. We do anticipate in the next housing element cycle that at some point, we will be subject to SB 35. The town's draft arena for the next housing element cycle is over 700 units. And the town obviously does not control wing units, affordable units are constructed. And so it's likely at some point, we may fall behind on meeting that target, in which case we would become subject to SB 35. The next bill, SB 330, this was adopted in 2019, and it was includes standards to address the current housing crisis in the state. The regulations will sunset on January of 2025. And similar to SB 35, it requires that only objective standards be used to evaluate qualifying projects. And in both the case of SB 330 and SB 35, an applicant, when they apply for a housing project, notifies the jurisdiction that they're applying underneath that particular legislation. And the Housing Accountability Act, this applies to any project that is consistent with the general plan. And the Housing Accountability Act does not proceed discretionary review. And it's very likely that in coming years, we will continue to see additional housing legislation that continues to move away from discretionary review and requires evaluation of projects based on objective standards. And for instance, in the last legislative session, there was a bill that would have allowed duplexes and fourplexes in single-family zones by rights. And while that bill was not adopted, it's likely that there may be similar bills in the future.
Martha, I have a question before we go to the next slide. So would you go back? So two questions, actually. So SB 35, there's a housing count, and then there's also, you mentioned the amount of permits. So let's just say we had developers trying to put permits through, and we didn't get to our housing count. And what happens if we don't make our housing count? What gets triggered? Do we get fined? I mean, it, you know, as a town, I mean, we can't, we can only do so much to attract developers to build projects.
Correct. So there's not a fine per se. So if adequate building permits have not been issued by jurisdiction, then the jurisdiction is subject to this particular legislation. And then this legislation removes any sort of discretionary review, and it becomes a ministerial review process. So I think that the state anticipates that if it's an easier process to go through, it may result in additional housing projects being proposed within a jurisdiction. But you know, obviously, we have no control over if a developer decides to build affordable housing within our jurisdiction.
With these standards established that we're going to go over, would once, let's just say we don't meet this standard, would the developers be using the same, let's just say, height guidelines or setbacks that were set forth in in the guidelines that we're trying to establish? Or would there be state guidelines that would be adhered to?
So they would be using the standards in the Objective Design and Development Standards that we adopt. However, if it's, if it's a project where they apply for state density bonus, then they're allowed to to request waivers for certain standards. So even if there's a height requirement or a setback requirement, they could request a waiver from a particular standard. And it's based upon the, as the percentage of affordability increases in a project, you get more waivers. So even though we are, the toolkit would include standards, but there could be project, eligible projects where a particular standard could be waived.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think the key point that Martha mentioned, I'll just reiterate, is that really state legislation is, and these various bills, and there's another one, SB 9 this year, that basically is takes the perspective that local jurisdictions have historically held up that the approval of mixed, multifamily housing in their jurisdictions. And by removing local jurisdictions' discretion or their ability to sort of say no or to continue to tinker over many years regarding, with regards to design or other standards, that this will then clear a sort of a hurdle that housing developers have had in the past so that they can push forward new development in a much more streamlined fashion and more predictable timeframe, leading to greater housing production. So that's, that's the sort of the policy objective that the state, a lot of these state bills are sort of proposed under.
Okay, so an objective standard, this is the definition that's included in SB 35, is defined as involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and standards that are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to the middle. And some of the examples of an objective standard includes structured parking shall not be visible from the street. For each personal outdoor space provided, a minimum dimension of five feet is required in any one direction. And mirror glass is prohibited. And as the commission likely recalls, our recent accessory dwelling unit ordinance only included objective standards. It included standards such as height and minimum setbacks and maximum size. And we also added a window standard that required clear story windows when an ADU was located within a certain distance of property line to, to address any potential privacy impacts. A non-objective standard is a standard that cannot be measured or requires interpretation. So some examples include produces high-quality design, use high-quality durable materials that age well and consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So in these examples, there is a level of interpretation that's done by both staff and decision-makers. And there's a level of subjectivity, whereas what one person considers high-quality design, another person may have a different definition of that. So does anyone have any questions about the difference between objective versus non-objective? So the Corder Madera general plan includes several mixed-use land use designation. Includes a mixed-use commercial, a mixed-use old Corder Madera Square, mixed-use regional serving commercial, which is off of Village, and mixed-use gateway, which is Tam Ridge. And you'll see on the next slide, which includes a map, a general plan land use map, that housing is permitted in the majority of commercial designated parcels in Corder Madera. And that, you know, underscores kind of the importance of adopting objective standards. The general plan also includes several policies on the development of residential design guidelines. And this project is helping us achieve those, those policies and goals.
And Martha, just to jump it, it's important to recognize also that this, those mixed-use districts allow for multifamily residential development. So all of the areas mentioned, currently multifamily residential development can be built in general plans. We're not necessarily talking about the single-family districts of these objective design standards.
And then in the absence of objective design standards, we only have what's in the zoning ordinance to evaluate a project or a qualifying project. So the standards we have relate to to height and setback and floor area, but there's nothing related to design. So this map again shows the various land use designations in Corder Madera. The mixed-use commercial is shown kind of in that teal color. And you see this land use designation along a lot of the corridors, along Tamil Pious, Meadow Suite, Paradise, and Tamil Vista. And then the mixed-use old Corder Madera Square is kind of that bluish, bluish indigo color, which is obviously in Old Town. So at the onset of the project, the town formed a technical advisory working group. And Corder Madera was one of the few cities to form a technical advisory working group. And I know Adam spent a lot of time kind of figuring out kind of the best people to have on this committee to help guide the development of the standards moving forward. And the group of individuals bring a lot of different experiences. And they have a skill set that, you know, staff does not have. So it helps to develop a toolkit that will really, you know, achieve the goals. So the working group is comprised of six individuals, which include Eli Beckman, who's the town council representative, Phyllis Metcalf is the planning commission representative, Bill Rose is a Corder Madera resident and a city planner for Santa Rosa, Dan McCadden, a multifamily housing developer, and as many commissioners know, he was a former commissioner as well. Patty Stolliar is a community representative, and then Rich Perlstein is a local architect. And the primary role of the working group is to review reports and documents that are prepared both by consultants and also staff to provide comments that are representative of the entire group and to make recommendations on implementation of the toolkit. And I'll pause here and see, Phyllis, if there's anything you want to add about the, the working group?
No, I think you pretty well covered it. We, I commend Adam for the group he put together because he really took time and reached out to get a number of viewpoints. And it enabled us to sit when we were still able to see each other in person and discuss what was going on. The consultants kind of led the discussion along with Adam. And I think seeing the results, we did a good job. Everybody did.
And it, they had to say yes. So I appreciate all of the, all of the volunteers here to help us through this process. So but yeah, and there's, we intend to continue to work with this group. Work is not done yet, but.
And the working group so far has met, they've had four meetings. And another one is scheduled for next month to talk about customizing the toolkit. Work is not done.
24th of March.
Yes. So the toolkit, it's a very lengthy document. Thank you all for reading it. I know Adam and I are still working our way through it. It's over 300 pages, and it is the final draft that has been prepared by the consultants. The administrative draft was released back in, in October, and this draft was reviewed by all the participating agencies. And we all provided comments to the consultants, and they amended the toolkit to address comments. And for instance, the draft toolkit did not include any privacy standards. And one of the comments that we had was that we thought that was important, that privacy, the issue, privacy concerns come up quite a bit. And so the final toolkit that we recently received now has privacy standards have been, have been included. So the toolkit will be customized by each jurisdiction. Each jurisdiction will evaluate which zones to adopt and also which standards to adopt. So the toolkit that we adopt will look different than the toolkit that Nevada adopts, than the toolkit that Mill Valley adopts. So it's intended to be a document that is reviewed and refined by each jurisdiction. And the toolkits, the toolkit includes eight zones, and these zones range from lower intensity edge neighborhoods to higher intensity core neighborhoods and main streets. And the eight zones are included in the T3, T4, and T5 neighborhoods that are shown on that transect below. And the different zones are based both on the location and also the context, you know, what's surrounding those areas. So this, this diagram shows a transect that goes from T1, which is natural, to T6, which is the urban core. T6 does not exist in Marin County. This includes buildings that have heights of 12 feet or more. So you see the T6 in areas such as San Francisco and Oakland. So the eight zones that are included in the toolkit are again, they're in the T3, the T4, and the T5 neighborhoods. Does anyone have any questions on that? So this shows the, the eight zones. Again, out of the eight zones, there were three identified as the, and Corder Madera, which include the T4 suburban neighborhood small, the T4 core neighborhood medium, and the T4 core main street. The map on the left shows the different zones that have been identified in Corder Madera. I would like to point out that we have several areas that are identified as other. That's shown in gray on the map. It includes areas along Meadow Suite and Paradise Drive, and then northern portion of town up near Lucky and Nellin. So these areas, a zone has not yet been assigned to them. So as part of the work of customizing the toolkit, planning staff will be working with both the working group and the consultant to assign a zone to these areas. So at the end of the mapping exercise, every parcel in Corder Madera that allows multifamily will have a zone that has been assigned to it. So staff is recommending a two-step process to implementing the toolkit. It includes both near-term and long-term actions. The benefit of doing this is that it allows the town to adopt something in a relative short term that can be used in the event that a qualifying multifamily housing project is submitted. So in this interim phase, the toolkit would only be applied to qualifying housing projects. But we anticipate it will take approximately six months to adopt a toolkit. And the, this also helps us to meet the timing requirements of the SB2 planning grant, as I mentioned. The grant we received from the state was $160,000. And the majority of those grant funds have been used for the ODS project. And the town will not receive reimbursement until a toolkit is adopted. The long term, we envision this occurring and being undertaken along with the housing element. Now, the housing element is due to HCD in January of 2023. So this is more of a longer and thoughtful process. And as part of this long-term action, there will be broad policy discussions with the community about how to plan for additional housing in Corder Madera, and there will be extensive community engagement and outreach. Adam, did you want to add anything?
Oh, sorry. I guess I wasn't, yeah, I think the only, this is the focus really that we're focusing on right now. But I think there's, it's worth mentioning that there could be other possible implementation approaches, not for these things, but even talking to Phyllis earlier today, you know, one of the things that has been in our general plan for a long time is the development of design guidelines for mixed-use development or, you know, residential multifamily stuff, development. And, and so down the road, separate and apart from these two projects, the near term and the long term, I think there could be other useful applications of this toolkit. So even if we do, let's say, have discretion and we keep our for certain types of multifamily projects or new projects, some of the toolkit, because as you've, if you've looked through it, through it, it has a lot of detail on architecture and design that it could be used to even help the commission in its discretionary review of design review permits or some things like that. So just to keep that in mind that, you know, these are the most immediate needs and the most, the first things that we see using the toolkit for. But there are potential other applications of this toolkit that we may think about down the road.
And we did discuss the, the recommendation for this two-step approach with the working group at a recent meeting, and the working group did agree with staff's recommendation. So the near-term actions.
Before we go any further, I had, I'm trying to remember, what is the base number of units for something to be considered multi-unit? Does it go down as far as a duplex?
It's a good question, Phyllis. Martha, you want to handle it? I mean, but it's basically each, the legislation actually has a different, they define it. And so it is, I believe SB 35 does say two or more units, I believe. Although I could, you know, that, I think they have different standards depending on the state legislation. If you notice the map, what we're really tying it to is our zoning districts that already allow multifamily housing. So our, our, our two zoning districts, as we talked about, the mixed, in the general plan, the mixed-use areas that, you know, and that's most of what we're looking at in terms of some of, some of the C1 areas. So those currently allow multifamily housing, but we can get more specifics on, on exactly what meets that definition of multifamily housing.
Yeah, I would think you would look at a six to 12-unit apartment house differently than you would look at a duplex or even a fourplex, depending upon where it's situated.
And this toolkit actually does anticipate that. So it has building forms that could, you know, accommodate more of the duplex or the fourplex. Again, it's more of the form than how many units are actually within it. But those are multi- But those are multifamily housing projects, so, so it would, it, it, the toolkit could accommodate those in areas that allow for the, that use.
And one last question based upon the different wording in each one of these laws, which I was reading up on today. If someone has a single-family dwelling and puts in an ADU, does that be, is the, it's a multifamily on the lot? Or the actual building itself, whether it holds multi-family units?
So, so that would not be considered multifamily if it was an ADU was, was added?
Yeah, the, the ADU is considered an accessory unit to the single-family home, so it's still a single-family home.
Okay, thank you.
Martha, one question for you if I might. Does odds have to be in place? Or to be effective for the next housing element implementation? It cannot be adopted after the implementation. To have effect.
So, so the odds toolkit can essentially be adopted at, at any time. The advantages of adopting, not waiting too long to adopt it, is we'd have something in place in the event that. A project is submitted in which there's no discretion to review it. And then also it allows us to receive the grant, the grant money back, but. You know, with, there's no requirement that we adopt it by a certain date.
Okay.
So for both of the recommended, kind of near-term and longer-term implementation. There would be actions that would be required that would be taken. As part of the near-term actions, we would determine which toolkit zones to adopt. So as that prior slide shows, there are a total of eight zones. And three of the zones have been identified in Corte Madera and all three of those zones fall within the T-four neighborhood. But there possibly, we may want to consider adopting one of the T-three zones. In the event that future state housing legislation allows a duplex in a single-family home. That particular zone would include standards for that scenario.
That, and, you know, that's SB, SB nine this year, which was just proposed in the legislature. That's exactly what SB nine does.
And then it, it, the T-five zones are the most, most urban of the eight zones in the toolkit. And the T-five zones allow buildings that are upwards of five stories and have a height of sixty-five feet. So the town may determine that those are too dense of a, a standard or of a zone to have, to adopt. Another task will be to map the zones on the land use map. Again, every, every, every parcel that allows multifamily housing, like zone would be assigned to it. Many areas have already been mapped, but the other zones would need to be mapped as part of this process. So planning staff would work with both the consultant and the working group on, on this task. And we would also evaluate the different development standards that are included in the toolkit and decide which ones to adopt. If we do not adopt a particular standard in the toolkit, such as fencing or landscaping. Then we could use the existing objective standards in our zoning ordinance that also regulate these types of things. And then lastly, we would evaluate if any standards in the toolkit should be, should be modified or changed.
And, and I would just, just somebody's, this came up with the working, with the working group, but. Ultimately, this, when we say adopt the toolkit. We're talking about a zoning ordinance amendment that would have to become before the planning commission and then be ultimately. Adopted by the town council that would essentially. Almost create a new chapter of the zoning ordinance that would then, basically, in the near-term actions. Would, would say something to the effect of if an applicant applies for multifamily housing project. Under SB thirty-five or under SB three thirty. That triggers this section of the zoning ordinance and that would include that the toolkit. That we're talking about tonight.
And then long-term actions would also be required. Again, this would coincide with the next housing element cycle. And would be approximately two-year timeline. The, the draft of regional housing need allocation for Corte Madera is seven hundred and twenty-five units. Amongst the different income levels, very low, low, moderate and above moderate. And it's, that's part of this discussion, there will be extensive, extensive community outreach. About identifying housing opportunity sites. And it's very likely that in order to develop a compliant housing element, that we will need to amend the general plan and zoning ordinance. To increase allowable density. And this phase of the project will require a lot of intensive thinking and community outreach. And as part of the long-term actions, we also evaluate the zones, the mapping of the zones. And it, it could be possible that maybe one of the areas that has a lower zone. Would, as part of the process, we would increase the zone and, you know, the allowable density. To, in order to accommodate the, the housing requirement. And so the, the next steps is starting the customization of the toolkit. So again, taking that final toolkit that was provided by the consultant and making it specific to Corte Madera. This is something that planning staff will work with the consultant and the working group on. We then envision coming back to the commission and having a discussion on recommendations. Related to the mapping of the different areas of town and also on changes that we are recommending to the, the final toolkit. And then the, the last step in the process would be returning to the commission for recommendation to a zoning ordinance amendment. And then on to the, the council for, for ultimate adoption. So that concludes our fast presentation. Both Adam and I are available for questions. And I know it's, it's a lot of information, so if there's anything that's unclear or if you have questions about the toolkit or the process. You know, we're happy to answer them and then also would like to hear your thoughts on the, the recommended implementation.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Adam, do you have anything else you want to say? No, okay. Well, I'm, I know there are questions among the commissioners, so. But I will start with Commissioner Vandell. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask of staff regarding this large document?
The, the thing that kind of bounced out at me, only because of my background. Is a lot of times, well, I've noticed several times that it says by right. So what, what's the legal implication of that phrase, by right?
It's, go ahead, Martha.
So by right would mean that there would not be a discretionary review. It's more kind of like a, like when someone submits a building permit, it's more of a ministerial process. Where you evaluate it with conformance with standards, but there's, you don't go through a discretionary process for evaluation.
The discretionary process meaning the planning commission?
Correct.
That is that.
Yeah, and it can also be, there can be a discretionary process at staff level as well. Some application, design of the applications are, it's still a discretionary process, but it goes to staff versus the commission.
So it's come up before and I, I've seen it recently. That the staff has a lot of discretion. And, and so is there, is that by right implication? Does that go to staff and how is that controlled?
So it would be staff that would be evaluating an application for, for conformance with objective standards. So that process occurs currently with like an accessory dwelling unit. Certain types of accessory dwelling units are required by state law to be by right. And an applicant is only required to submit a building permit application. So as part of that process, planning staff evaluates that the ADU meets all the objective standards in the ordinance. So it would be a similar process in that staff would be evaluating a project in verifying conformance with the objective standards.
Okay, I just, I, I noted in, in some of the materials that. They've already talked about lawsuits. That have been brought and, and so that, that idea by right. Seems to carry a lot of weight and especially in a town like Corte Madera. Where. Lawsuits sort of in a smaller town, lawsuits take on a bigger meaning. And, and so I just have some. Well, I have some issues and some other questions around that. That's all.
Okay, so you want to come back to the questions later about lawsuits and so forth? All right. Mr. Rizzo, I'd like to hear what your questions are, if you have any further questions of staff at this point.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I, well, I started to go through some of the standards or obviously wasn't a lot to, lot to review. One of the things that, that struck me, and I know that I've spoken to Adam and Martha about extensively. Was just the, the density, the units per acre and how that, that might apply to the different zones. And the densities within the, the different building types and. You know, I'd be, I'd be interested to see where we, where we end up, but, you know, it's so low right now. That it's really tough for. Anybody to come in to some of these small lots and, and make either the numbers work or make it a feasible project. And then some of the larger things, just to make the numbers, you know, you, it's going to be really hard to come up with a, a building. That is kind of suited towards whatever the volume restrictions are with the density restrictions. And I, I think maybe Adam could maybe explain a little bit more about his thinking. I know that you guys are probably stuff, discuss this in staff, on a staff level. But you know, obviously some of those, those different building types and setbacks must have different implications on the density you guys are thinking about. Per, for units per acre.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's a good point. I mean, one of the, one of the useful things, I think, about going through this process. And developing this toolkit, which does talk a lot about. Compatible built environment or a compatible form of structures. And trying to see, you know, basically what a. Development might look like in one of these zones is that it really puts the focus on, on the actual. The, the design of the, of the project first and foremost. So you, so i- in a sense, I think we're trying to, and use this tool as, as an approach to talk about multifamily housing of. What do we want? You know, what do we think good development looks like? What do we think it, it can be or is going to contribute to the built environment in our neighborhoods? And start from that standpoint and then. Reevaluate what are, you know, if we pick something that we think works. Then we reevaluate actually what our current standards say in terms of units per acre. And it may very well be that you, you don't really need to focus so much on units per acre. Because ultimately at the end of the day, you're getting the design and the, of a structure that you think works for that particular area of town. And if we do it that way, I, you know, the hope is really that we emphasize what sort of urban, what, what, you know. What sort of form, form do we want to see out of our multifamily housing projects? Do we want to see something that engages the street? That creates more walkable environment, visual interest, fits into its neighbors in terms of height and, and whatnot. And I think what we're going to find if we do that frankly, and, you know, we haven't done that analysis of backing into the units. Per acre or the floor area ratio, but I think we may very well find. That, that what you're saying is true, that our current units per acre actually is fairly, fairly low. And that you could actually fit more units into the same form and design. That we have all agreed now works for this particular area of town. You know, but a lot of it does, is, there's an interplay between the, the building. And also parking's a big part of that, you know, and how, what your parking requirements are going to be, where the parking goes on a site. And things like that, so, but that's our sort of. Thinking at this point, so for, I mean, one example, just, I think Martha and I both find it interesting. If you're on Willow, right next to. Town Hall and you go down the street, there's single-family homes that are single-family homes. That look pretty much the same right next door to a, a four-unit. House that is actually a apartment house, but it, it looks like for all intents and purposes, like fits into that street. And so that's one example of how it's really about the, the, the form. And actually, yeah, you, you live on, right, right next to some of those.
I know which ones you're talking about, yeah.
And so that, that's where you, it comes down to, it's more, let's, let's try to figure out what the right character is. And the, of the design and the, and the built form and then back into maybe the units per acre. But that's, that's a good observation in that I think you're right. And a lot of these bigger sites are, are units per acre, well, one, it may not be. I, I, I think that the financial calculus is, is down the road as well. I think in the, as we talk about, frankly, I think a lot of this will come into play when we get into the discussion about housing element. And we need to start to think about, the state requires us to think in terms of units. So we're going to have to actually play that out a little bit more than with the near-term implementation. Of what we're trying to accomplish there, so hopefully that responds somewhat to, I think, your, your comment there.
And I was wondering, you know, in, in some of the, the diagrams, they were talking about two and a half stories, three and a half stories. Rather than heights that could accommodate full stories. Is, is there a thinking behind the way that it's presented there? Like, why would you call it a two and a half stories and, yeah, I mean, are you talking about the roof? I mean, what are they talking, why, why don't they just say thirty-five feet? And I'm just saying that because I was looking at it, like, are you saying that I can only build two stories and the other half a story is not accessible? Or should it more be defined as a, as a, as a height restriction with some sort of setback? After a certain height, which they did cover as well. I mean, maybe they're trying to give you guys a palette to discuss on how we're going to come up with the standard. But two and a half stories is a little confusing to me, come from someone who has to design these things. And the other one that I just want to kind of just caution against, that I thought that was a little bit. When we get too, too specific with window sizes. I felt like it was more of an, an exercise in proportion and scale rather than defining that a window needs to be fifteen feet by fifteen feet. Especially in a commercial building, when we have brands that are coming in that want to brand their, their, their elements. I was just curious about what you guys thought about that, because it's, it's getting really, really specific. And not a lot of flexibility to the, the final user and the designer of the space. And then lastly, I, I just wanted to mention that, so if, if you do get a project that meets all the criteria, but maybe like one. Would it then come to a discretionary review in front of either town council or the planning commission?
The toolkit does include a process for adjustments to, to, to standards. I haven't spent too much time at this point evaluating it. But I anticipate that there is some room for minor changes to be done. Without it having to go to the planning commissioner or town council.
Yeah, well, I was just saying, like, what if they can't meet their parking restriction, but we really want the project to move forward? Would, would the process be to come to a commission or would it be? You know, how would you guys resolve that if, if someone came up with a really good. Presentation and proposal and, and, but it just didn't quite check all the boxes.
I think it would depend on what standard was not being met. And if it, if it's something like parking, then it is possible that a parking variance would maybe be, be required. In which case it would go before the, the planning commission for consideration. Depend on the, the standard and what was being requested to deviate from.
And, and I think you're, you're touching on a important point in terms of how we move forward and implement in, in. The level of specificity or restrictiveness with some of the standards. We're going to have to decide whether we want to modify some of these to allow, you know, to be more flexible. So we don't run into potentially those situations. But we get generally what we think makes a good project and good design. Or do we want to be a little bit more on the firmer and stricter side? Restrict some of the flexibility and then if somebody needs to ask for. A, a change from what the requirements are, then they are kicked into a discretionary process. Or as Martha said, I, she's right. And I don't. It's not something that we've spent a lot of time focusing on, but we certainly will. With the process for actually some minor adjustments to some of the standards, I think is in the toolkit. I just, we're, you know. We're still working our way through the specific. Recommendations in the toolkit. And again, those can be, that's something if we think we want to allow within the confines of. The actual development standards, we, we can do so. In fact, we did so in the. Well, it was. The MX one district does have some. Basically some allowance for some flexibility. It says, here's the standard. But if you make a good argument to go additional five feet height based on the needs of the commercial space or operator design. You can do so with special permission just for that aspect of the project, you know, stuff, stuff like that. So we can, we can. Sort of customize it and tailor it a little bit more to what we think is the right approach for, for by right ministerial projects.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And, and also you mentioned on the window sizes, again, that gets to the constraints. You know, when we go to the next phase in terms of adopting things, we don't have to. You know, we may, one thing that I know Martha and I have discussed, and I think we may have mentioned with the working group was that. You know, the architectural style section is very specific and if we like. You know, the zones and the building typology, but. Allow the architect then from there, you'll get those locked in. Then the architectural piece may not be something that we sort of require. As meeting that chapter, but, but we use it as sort of a guideline. Approach and sort of say, this is what we, we want you to design to and not make it a requirement. So there, you know, you can. Pick and choose sort of which things. That's one, that's sort of an obvious one where you could pull it out or put it in depending on what we decide as a town, you know, is, is. The right approach.
And something that maybe you could tear into later on, if you guys didn't feel like you wanted the rigidity right away. Did it work for you guys?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jim. I know you're out there, Dr. Bunge.
Yes. So the thought that I had in going through this is the role of the planning commission is to. One. Comment on, as Jim was saying, whether we think these standards are correct and are going to work and are going to get the projects we want. And then the other goal is to figure out how these. The functional building code. Fits in to the existing multi-use zones that we, mixed use zones that we have. Are, are we supposed to really look at that or look at that with you from your recommendations? Give me a better sense of what my role is here.
So we are planning to have a, a follow-up workshop with the commission where we will get into more details. On the standards in the toolkit and we'll be looking for feedback from the commission on. Standards that should be included and or modified. So at, at this point, we're not necessarily looking. For that level of, of detail from you, but if there's something that really jumps out or catches your eye, you know, obviously feel free to, to share that as part of tonight's discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think the compatibility with our existing regulations. One, we do, there will be, and we're going to do this first with the working group. Who's going to be doing this first and there, we want, you know, and we may actually bring more members of the working group to the next planning commission workshop. Where we talk about what Martha was saying, but. We really want to ensure that. That mapping exercise where we say this area of town is a. T three, whatever, and from that flows a bunch of standards. That we got those right. And I think the planning commission can, can play an important role there. Understanding sort of the existing. Conditions of town and, and then further in the future, when we, you know, get into. Maybe the need, as we talked about, to change our existing regulations. Because of the housing element or rezone some sites or what have you. Certainly it's going to be that same exercise of are we matching? The, the character. That we. That we want to see with, with objective design standards or with the right densities and whatnot. So. Hopefully that. It will become a little bit more clear as we go through the process, but, but. As Martha said, if, if there are things now that sort of as, as Jim, as Commissioner Rizzo just mentioned, like. Why are we, you know, maybe getting into window standards might be a little much, you know, that's helpful to know at this point as we sort of. Go into the next phase of customizing, at least getting the first draft of this toolkit. Back before the planning commission.
Okay, Bob, what else?
That's good for now.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Metcalfe. Do you have?
I just had two questions that came to mind as Martha was doing the presentation. One, in the beginning, you said when we were going over the bills, the state. Statewide bills. And you mentioned, I think it was SB thirty five and SB three thirty. That if someone comes into the planning department, they have to say that I wish to. Build under this law, that law. What happens if they don't say it? If they don't know when they come in? How, and yet their project could fall under those restrictions, let's call it. How do you put that together?
Interesting question. When someone is applying for a qualifying project, there are special application forms that they use. So it's. A totally different process and it really is. The applicant's responsibility to be, to be aware if they have a qualifying project and to alert staff. It's possible that we may not know all the information at the onset of a project to know if it's a qualifying project. Adam, I don't know if you want to add anything, anything to that?
Yeah, I think, I think the state law, fortunately, the one thing that state law does do is says they actually have to file. Sort of and let us know that they are applying under these state bills. So if they don't, if they don't. If they do not, then we would actually just go through our normal design review process and not, it wouldn't be a. A buy right. It wouldn't be anything like that, you know, we wouldn't use the toolkit.
Yeah.
And in the near term, right? So.
Yeah. So it's the applicant's responsibility. The other question was. And I could see as someone just coming into this now, we have our zones. That exist. You know, we have commercial zones and residential zones and mixed. Use zones, they're called zone. And now we're coming in with zone two, three, zone two, four. Or. Are we going to have to rename the zones? Are we going to have to show the zoning for each lot in the map? So people know, well, this is residential. T four, and then they're different. What was it? Two or three different? T four, this, T four, that. How are we going to go about this? So everybody. Is clear at get go, this is what we're doing. And I'm about people coming in. Who want to build something.
Yes. So, so staff would essentially create. A map that would identify the different, assign a zone to each parcel that allows multifamily housing. So it would be. And then that zone would correspond with what the, the standards and requirements are. I agree though, it is confusing in that there's a zoning standard already in place. And now we're adding this, this new zone. To it, so.
Yeah. And, and to start, I think the key is that you wouldn't even look at this new map unless you were applying, applying. Under SB thirty five or SB three thirty, or let's say we add another. Piece of legislation or government code to it that, that requires us to. Use objective standards only. For approving a project. So it would exist only if sort of you triggered that. That. If you, if you applied under those state bills or that legislation. Then the map sort of magically appears and you use that map to start to review your application. So it sort of is in the background. But it does exist and we're going to have to adopt it in the zoning resolution. But again, it wouldn't be triggered. Unless. An application was submitted under this, under these. Pieces of legislation that we say, say it would apply to. And then if we choose, you know, theoretically and sometime in the future, we, we may choose to have it apply elsewhere, but at the, for the. For the time being, we're really talking about making it apply to just these projects that qualify. Under the state legislation.
So it's possible to build a multi-unit building. That doesn't fall under these bills and we would handle it as usually be handled with staff and commission.
And a good example of that is the six forty five Campbell Pius project that the commission. Had a preliminary study discussion a few months ago. So that project. Is, is not subject to any of the legislation. So it's going through the traditional design review process where the planning commission will. Evaluate that process and it'll be a discretionary review.
Thank you. That's it, Peter.
Okay. Thank you. A couple of questions. Is there anything that says? That a community has to adopt a certain level of zoning, so of these zones, T five, T four, T three? Or it's entirely voluntary at this point?
It entirely voluntary and you know, each community will, will probably. Choose to adopt different zones. Nevada may be the only community that adopts the T five zone, at least initially. So it is. A decision that's made by each, each community. Some communities may only adopt, you know, one or two zones. So it, it really depends on. What the kind of existing context and location is of. Properties with multifamily housing that go out.
So if, and that is requisite. For the applicant to be within the zone arena that he's applying for. If he says, I'm coming in, there's SB thirty five. And this is a T four zone. And I'm going to apply for these units and I'm going to apply for these. Credits from the state as well. And. He, he can do that, but he can't come in and say, I'm applying for a T five. Building here, and even though it's a T four zone, he can't do that.
Correct. So the jurisdiction would establish. Where the zones are within the community.
So. You know, if we're, if we're low on. Housing count. Does HCD get to say, well, you don't have enough housing, so we're going to make some of your zones T five? Can they do that? Or how does that work?
So HCD won't really be familiar with the, our objective design standards, but they will evaluate our, our housing element that we submit. And they will be scrutinizing the housing sites that we identify to verify that. They have the potential to achieve what our required. Housing allocation is.
Right.
Right. So we, so we may say, and staff may come through the housing element process that. You know, currently this is a T four zone in this site, but you know, frankly, if we're going to meet our housing element numbers, this is a good opportunity to. You know, raise it to get. Not only, we think this could be a good built form here, but it, it could be moved up to. Some other zone that allows potentially a little bit larger building. As part of our strategy to, to meet our housing element. Planning requirements and, and goals. But we're not doing that now.
No. But seven hundred twenty five or forty five units is a big number to reach.
Well, and, and, and also there's no requirement in the housing element process that we get rid of our discretionary review. So we could just actually change our regular zoning to allow for more units without eliminating our discretionary review. You know. As long, there's a housing element law related to that too, as long as we do that prior to adopting our housing element. So. It gets a little confusing, but, but. So that's a little difference. I, I see that process. Commissioner Chase as. Using the toolkit to almost show what actually if we do increase our. You know, our units per acre on a certain site or certain sites. This is, then we could almost require the. The toolkit as part of that, or we don't have to, but we could, we could. Show an example of what we would want to get there or what we could get. With a higher density structure.
Got it. Okay. I think it's time to open this up to public comment. There's not a lot of participants out there, but I think it's time to find out what they have to say. So we'll open this up and we'll give you. Three minutes to speak. I will time you myself. And. You can email in a comment to publiccomment@tcnmail.org or raise your hand. On the Zoom screen. So that would be the simplest thing to do. So Tracy.
Thank you. Just give everyone a minute to. Raise their hand if they like. Don't see any. Yeah. Go ahead and check for emails while we wait.
I would just say that one of the questions, there is this. Some of the administrative. Process that we're talking about application filing and that you have to come in under certain government codes. It's actually on page, starts on page two eighty five of the toolkit under procedures. And so it talks about procedures for applications filed under SB thirty five. And. Completeness review, compliance review, compliance determination. Post-decision procedures, post-approval modifications to the project. So if they. Change something after it's been approved, how does that work? Extensions and expirations, stuff like that. So that's, starts on two eighty five, which may be helpful from a procedural standpoint.
I can just confirm Chair Chase, I, I don't see any raised hands and there are no public comment emails.
Terrible. This is terrible. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll keep this open for a moment. Says that there are. Seventeen and we amount to. Six, twelve.
Yeah, I think we have seven members of the public, but it looks like Phil Boyle is one of them. So I'm not sure. He's going to chime in with. The tough questions for staff. Hopefully not, Phil, come on.
All right. So with no one.
There is. Cheryl, looked like you were raising your hand and dropped back down again. I'll give you another second. Sorry, Peter, to. See if that was a question or, or just an accident. Looks like her hand's staying down.
Okay.
All right. Yep.
Standing down. Okay. All right. So what we'll do then is we'll close the public comment section of this hearing. And take it back for further. Commentary from the commissioners to give staff some feedback on this. More specific and. More direct if you have that kind of commentary. Anything else you want the commissioners to chime in on, Adam?
Well, the only other thing is, is, you know, I think Martha laid out the next steps in our approach to implementation, which we went over with the technical advisory working group and they, again, that is has a first step of this near term actions, just dealing with these pieces of state legislation. And then the second phase is going to be more associated with the housing element and using the toolkit as part of that discussion. So confirmation that that seems to be a good approach and and you know, the next step within that process, as we discussed, would be really, we're going to work with the working group and our consultant to try to customize this, do the mapping exercise and then come back to the commission as a next step. And if that sounds good, you know, as we don't want to go too far down the road. If 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 there the commission feels like there's other things we need to be considering or doing at this point. But anyways, that's that's obviously that would be helpful to to hear. Keep moving in that direction.
But, okay. With that said, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Bandell to see what she would want to say in response to the query about feedback to staff and so forth.
I I have a question. What what's the role of the state here? They passed these this legislation, these three, as far as I can see right now, three different ways of complying that we as a town have to come into compliance and we're trying to do it through this customization of the odds toolkit. What 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 is their role now? What is the state's role now as far as enforcement of that?
I'll take it. Go ahead, Martha.
I was going to say, you know, when when different bills are are adopted by the state, you know, if 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 they're not adhered to, then there could be lawsuits. You know, if there was an eligible project that we couldn't, someone came in and said, well, we have a project that meets SB three thirty. We want to apply. If we did not adhere to the established process, then we could be potentially sued by by the developer.
So it's the suit. It's a suit by the individual developer, not not a some kind of penalty by the state. Is that right?
Correct. And the the Housing Accountability Act, that particular act is actually was adopted back in the eighties. But it's become a tool that's been used by both developers and housing advocates in recent years. And there's been quite a few lawsuits where they've sued jurisdictions for denying projects if they are HAA eligible. And there are monetary fines associated with that. I believe it's ten thousand dollars per unit if you deny a project. So there are, you know, some financial implications as well, potentially.
Okay. And and so if, okay, and so I have a question also about when you change, when you change or reevaluate a zone or do this mapping kind of thing, if somebody is living in that zone and you reclassify it to a situation that they don't like, can they sue the the town as a taking? Is it is that when you buy a house in a zone, you're buying like a residential house? If it's changed to a multi-use or commercial zone, you've taken away a property right. It's a taking. I I I'm trying to figure out the mentality of this.
Well, I would just say there's there's two different. So there's one, there's, you know, the normal zoning stuff that we typically deal with. You know, residential districts, commercial districts, and and that has a well-established legal basis for basically deciding that certain areas need to be residential or commercial. And it's all based on land, you know, land use law and it goes back to the police power back ultimately at its origination. And it's really about to protect public health and safety. And that's why you're 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 basically organizing land uses around a way that establishes a quality, certain quality of life. And certainly somebody could take it, take issue with that. But, you know, we the practice of urban planning is such that you do the necessary steps. That makes it very difficult to, you know, hopefully we would put our job is to put ourselves in a position based on evidence and based on rationale that we don't lose a suit such as that, that somebody would arbit, you know, challenge our decision making as arbitrary or capricious or something like that. But takings, you know, it's well established that in and of itself, organizing land uses around a well, a a plan is not a a taking of private property. So that that's the basis, fundamental basis of sort of the, you know, urban planning and zoning law and land use law. But what we're doing and and just to differentiate that from what we're talking about here with the toolkit, the toolkit in the immediate term really doesn't really doesn't change anybody's permissions and what their current zone is right now. It just is establishing requirements for development on that process pursuant to, you know, if anything, it's the state law that's just taking away discretion. It's not saying you have to change your density or your, you know, build a bigger building there or anything like that. So it's really, we're just saying, we we want to, we want to make sure that if somebody does apply under these state laws, that we actually have some discretion. We don't have discretion, but we have some standards in place that gets us the type of development that we actually want. Otherwise, we don't have that and we just, all we have really right now, we do have standards today, objective standards in our C three zoning districts or commercial zoning districts that are, but it's just like thirty five feet in height and a set minimum setback. And then who knows what it looks like, you know? So so this is intended to fill that gap that, you know, right now, we don't really have enough standards in place to really get development that we think would would be, you know, fit in or meet the character or whatnot. So we're we're changing the subjective process that we have through design review and trying to make it really objective and get what we want. But we're not changing underlying sort of rights at all with this approach of, you know, the odds toolkit. I think you may be more, you know, down the road when we talk about the housing element and and bigger buildings and whatnot, that that gets into rezoning properties, maybe to higher density or whatnot. And and as I mentioned, that that speaks to the first part of what I was my response, which was more about the the fundamental sort of zoning legality of zoning and and planning.
Okay, so I have another, well, two more questions. One is, I I'm just thinking about the way it was presented or or the change in the community in that project home key was presented to the community and what a problem that was. And even though Corde Madera wasn't necessarily responsible for the way it happened, there was a lot of heat generated by that. So what what's the plan for presenting this to the to the town, to the people, to the constituency?
Yeah, well, you know, I think we're we've been, we've been talking about it at every, you know, at the community chats. I mentioned it today at our community chat. I mentioned it, I think, two weeks ago or three, you know, three weeks ago when we had our last technical working group meeting. All of those meetings are publicized on our newsletter. And they have been news flashes going out to our community. So I, you know, I think I think part of it is there's a lot going on. And so there's a lot of, and unfortunately, again, we're all on Zoom platform, which makes, I don't know, it can be a benefit to certain people, but it also makes it a little less personal and and maybe less real to certain people rather than having like a physical meeting. So it's it's a challenge, Commissioner Bandell. It really is, you know, for a lot of things. But I think that's why we're having these meetings now. We're trying to, you know, get people to come and and listen to this. I think the key, the key sort of discussion point is, this is at least the near term project that we're talking about here is really a response to state law that's already been passed. So we're not, we're trying to sort of put in things in place to make sure that we're prepared for an application that somebody could do under, not under SB thirty five, but under the other SB three thirty today and make sure we're prepared and and sort of getting development that we think works and and protect sort of that. You know, our our decision making to a certain extent or the extent possible. So I think it it will be a learning process. You know, obviously, we have to explain all that and and we've tried to do that in all of our documents and on our website. And we'll try to do it again and again. And I think it's just, we just keep, you know, we're going to have to keep talking about it. And at some point, fully expect that, you know, it's always happens where you actually say, all right, now we got the draft ready to go in front of the planning commission for review. That's, you know, that's probably when we'll get the most people coming out and talking about it. But but if you, you know, if you think there's other opportunities or suggestions for outreach, we're we're happy to sort of do more on that. And then the housing element, the 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 longer term thing, absolutely, we, you know, that's where we have to be, you know, again, we're we're talking about planning for seven hundred and twenty five units. And, you know, that's certainly a a requirement that we didn't come up with. But nonetheless, we do have options for where to start to look for opportunities or where the best opportunity sites are for that. And that's where we really need to engage people from the beginning in that process and as much as possible and try and just to generate as much interest in it because that as we ramp and get down to the deadline on that, there will be, you know, there will be really key decisions to make. So in any case, I, yeah, I I hear your point loud and clear. This, some point, I think there'll be more interest in this. I'm glad to see frankly, this is more than we've, more attendees than we've had. I guess it's about five members of the public, but but slowly but surely, hopefully, hopefully, all of you listening in can can inform and talk to your neighbors and but in any case, that's that's where we are at this point, Margaret.
I I think that what's needed is a real PR campaign. I mean, I really think that like the the Marin IJ article was a good start. There's Rin Magazine. There's, I I I mean, I think since it 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 takes into account so many, so much of the county and the towns in the county, I think it has to be a countywide campaign. So people understand that this isn't, you know, the the idea that a a lot of town discretion is being taken away. People's neighborhoods may in fact change somewhat. And I think that people have to be prepared for
Yes.
at ahead of time.
Well, it already had, I mean, one, it already has, you know, right? The discretion's been taken away to a large extent and that there's more bills and and there's, I mean, if there is a lot of publicity around a lot of the housing bills out there, but I know there's a lot of other things that are also during, especially during COVID, that people are more interested in, such as schools reopening and other, you know, important facets facets of life that are sort of impede, you know, are constrained right now and are sort of thrust to the forefront. So I think it's, you're right, and and I think we'll continue. I was happy to see that I I I J article as well. I thought that was really helpful. And and hopefully we can get more as as this goes on. But yeah, I understand your, the sort of the concern you're raising and and it's always, it it, you know, we just went through the, you know, similar process with the climate adaptation plan and 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 once the draft came out, you have to explain what's going on here. But I think one of the, one of the reasons why we like this approach and the two-phase approach is that this first phase is a little bit easier to explain, that we're really just responding to state law. And and we're putting in sort of some, however you want to describe it, you could talk about it as protections or or sort of desired development, objective standards, just to fill the gap. But it also during that process, I think, will really help people draw some, you know, get people to see it. And then it, once we talk about the housing element, we'll be able to have sort of already have generated some interest in multifamily housing discussion and all the housing issues that are ongoing. And so, you know, in in some ways, that two phased approach, I think, can can work from a generating sort of, you know, get, let's, let's get people interested now and engaged and we'll we'll take that and bring it into the housing element discussion. Which is the more, again, the more there's, there's frankly, a lot more decision making to be to be done during that process.
Okay. I think that's enough for me.
For the moment. Right. Okay. Dr. Bundy, you know, your your thoughts about what you'd want Adam and staff to hear?
Well, one of the things that did go through and make some notes on is some of the standards in relationship to landscaping, planting, other things like that. But I think I'll review back over those and send Martha an email to ask for clarification or thoughts on that. But the one thing I I guess I'd like to bring up now is the big concern that we've had as far as discretionary review on a lot of projects is this issue that Adam mentioned, privacy, but also views and sunlight. So are, from the standpoint of SB thirty five, are those going to be off the table? Or is there any way that those can be objectified?
So the the toolkit does not include any objective standards related to to views. This has been raised as as a concern that a lot of jurisdictions have, just because these are one of those issues that, you know, can can really be cause a lot of concern from individuals near a project. And the consultants have indicated there's really no way to create objective standards that address views. You know, we did work, they have included some privacy standards. The original toolkit did not include privacy standards and that also was raised as a concern. And they were able to add objective standards to address privacy. But the views is just something that is so subjective and it really has to do with kind of site specific project that it's, it just wasn't possible to to come up with objective standards that could be applied countywide, unfortunately.
Yeah, and it's sort of similar to, we had the view discussion with the town council and planning commission about how we should be evaluating views. And it's sort of similar to how we are, what we came out with was, it is site by site. There is a lot of subjectivity, need to consider a bunch of variety of different information. But so it is something that is just really challenging from an objective standpoint. Views of what, from where, you know, to to do a standard on that makes it, it it becomes very challenging to meet those when designing a multifamily building in a lot of, in a lot of instances, so. But certainly it's something that we can think more about as we try the custom, go through the customization phase and knowing, as you mentioned, Commissioner Bundy, that that is obviously one thing that people are going to be concerned about.
Thank you.
That can't be it, no?
That's it. I I do have some specific things that I'll comment on an email, but that's getting a little bit into the minutia.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo, are you there? Okay, Mr. Rizzo, are you there?
I am, let me unmute. Well, you know, the more and more I'm learning about this, you know, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great exercise to get ahead of this because we could, we can. Start customizing this palette to the neighborhoods and I think that, that. A few of the commissioners had, you know, have a lot of concerns about privacy and the neighborhoods, which is, you know, one of the most important. Things that we review and if we don't get ahead of some of the building envelope sizes now and, and we, we don't. Build enough units, it sounds like that we're not going to, then, you know, in a few years. Even if we had a discretionary review, the developers are going to come in and build where they're going to build, so it's going to be really, I think, important to have our standards in place. That we all agree to, I think that, you know, our staff's going to come up with some really good ideas for these different zones that are going to fit within these different environments. And the most important part is that to make sure that these building envelopes fit the environments and then I really like the idea that it's not about the acres. Per unit, it's going to be about the site themselves and how it's going to fit within those neighborhoods if we are going to use standards like this, super important. Because the lot sizes are so differently sized and shaped in our community, they're very, very unique and distinct, so. You know, having some sort of framework is going to help the developers, planners and, and the commissioners in the long run, I think. Be happy and satisfied with some of these, these projects that are going to come before us. Adam, do you think that perhaps some of these guidelines might, might bleed into your general plan, I know you, there's not a lot of guidelines for commercial residential mixed use. Just to have some kind of standardization, some continuity between the buildings within the zones, if someone doesn't apply for SB thirty five?
Yeah, I think absolutely this. This could be a tool that we use as part of, let's say, a planning commission review of a multifamily housing project. Even though it's not, you know, we don't have to use the objective standards, it can be used as a guide to help sort of. Commissioners, staff evaluate the appropriateness of certain design projects, multifamily projects. Whether or not they're applying under state laws or whether they're just coming in for. You know. A new project under our design review. There's a lot of, I think, really useful. Sort of design, urban design principles that are laid out here very well, as well as. Site planning and, and, you know, basically the. I'm looking more at sort of the setbacks and the forms and sort of how. You know, how buildings address the street and the sidewalk and things like that. That, that I think we could use for a lot of, you know, for, you know, whether it's just a guideline, that, that's, that's the great thing I think about. Going through this process, this is something that, that aspect of it is something that I think, as Phil, as Commissioner Metcalf has mentioned in the past, is something that our two thousand nine general plan talked about. But it's also something I think that, you know, the planning commission has sought for a long time is some help and sort of a consistent way of evaluating. You know, multifamily housing projects or larger developments that we may see from time to time.
Similar to our findings for R one. In a way that we sort of have a framework.
Yeah, yeah, we've seen enough of those that, yeah, that there's sort of this way in which the commission now has developed a sort of set of. Guiding principles for how second story additions might, you know, should look, well, we don't have that same. Guidance right now for multifamily, other than everyone says, you know, don't do it like Wincup. You know, right, so. But in any case, but even there, there's elements of that project that actually, when you go by it now, work, work okay and it's picking out the good elements and. And doing away with the ones that don't work, so.
Yeah, and I think the only other thing is just to reiterate that, you know, I think some of, getting too rigid with some of those architectural elements and window sizes and things could be. Could limit the creativity and what could be developed and perhaps deter some, some development if it's a little bit too much over the top. But, yeah, I think being more concerned with the billing envelope is where we want to be if, if we're going to want some continuity within the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Mrs. Metcalf, you are partially responsible for this document, so.
Oh, thanks a lot. So I do have some questions and comments, especially because you brought up my least favorite building, Wincup. Taking it from there, Adam. Wincup was created, if we can call it a creation, because of the A bag numbers that we were supposed to reach. We then found out that A bag had made a mistake and gave us numbers that were far more than we should have had. Interestingly enough, when the people from A bag. Go around giving lectures and speeches and they talk about. Building and stuff, they give an example of what shouldn't be done and they show several slides of Wincup. But based with all that, the county is now objecting to the figures they were given. Whether they shall do it by a lawsuit or what, I don't know, I just know that. The board has gotten as far as the board of soup's having discussions and whether or not they'll accept the A bag numbers or not. We're talking about, what was it, seven twenty five? Is there any chance that we would object to the numbers? Or try to have them modified in any way? Or will we just try to meet them?
Well, there is, I mean, there's a formal appeal process that a city can undergo and. So that's an available option to the town council if they want to go that route, I don't think there's much. You know, the appeals in the past and where frankly, what's happening is Southern California is actually going through this now first. Because their housing elements are due like this year, then Sacramento area of governments is going through that second and we're like third in line, so. Those, as my understanding, those appeals go to HCD, they don't go to A bag, they go to the state.
Right.
And, 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 you know. I, it's hard for me to comment really on the likelihood of success, but it doesn't change, the units would have to go somewhere else, put it that way. They don't, they don't get disappear from the, you know, they'd go to another city or they'd go, and so it creates.
That's why I'm asking because a certain allotment is given to the county and that allotment is broken down into the eleven cities and the unincorporated. And if the unincorporated area. Let's say it's fourteen hundred and they go down to twelve hundred, that two hundred is going to be reallocated around the cities in the county. And that's why I'm questioning, are we, do we move forward and say. We think that this is more than can be handled, at least not to sue, I don't like suing, you know how I feel about suing people and things. But to at least be on record of questioning that the amount that was allotted to us is more than we feel is justified.
Well, yeah, and the town council is already, and we're getting a little bit off of the agenda topic here, but, but the town council did send a letter. Already when the, the draft arena numbers came out to object to the methodology with which they were using to come up with, at that time, I think it was seven hundred and fifteen units, so. The town has gone on record, as has all, many other Marin County jurisdictions, including the county. To, you know, to, to say that the basis for this many units is really, was the wrong approach. And, you know, can continue, what happened was we got ten more units than any less, so, I mean, you can continue to do that, but. You know, it's, it, I think you have to plan for the potential that it's, the real potential that it, it's, it's a futile effort at some point, so. I will just leave it at that and that's sort of staff's approach at this point, but certainly. Can continue to sort of comment on. These numbers, but, but again.
Are related to this, if I may. One, the bill, you know, last year when COVID hit, all of the bills in the legislature that weren't related to COVID were stopped, yeah. And I guess it's coming back, I think you may have mentioned it, that particular bill that said in R one zone areas, there could be, I guess duplexes and fourplexes. Within single family zoning. Now, if that bill comes back this year and if it's one of Weiner's bills that's going to come back. How will that affect what we're doing here?
Martha, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, well, we would possibly want to adopt one of the T three zones because that zone would include forms that would be appropriate in, in single family zone, so you're more traditional. Duplexes or fourplexes. So that would ensure that if, if future legislation does allow duplexes in single family zones, that we have the. Objective standards in place to evaluate a project.
And should we just assume that? If somebody wants to afford flex, they could claim it under one of those bills they're doing it under, that that's a possibility or. If it is in an R one zone, would it be? Not allowed or would it just fit in like in every other zone?
I think at this point, it's too soon to tell until, you know, any legislation is adopted, it's, it's hard to speculate what would be, would be allowed. But, you know, if legislation was adopted that allowed duplexes in single family zones. This toolkit would allow us to have standards to apply to, to project if it was consistent with the state law bill that, you know, has not yet been adopted.
And my last question is. Will the toolkit and also these two bills that we were talking about earlier, thirty five and three thirty, will they affect or in any way adjust the findings? That we use?
They will not, so if someone applies for a project under three thirty and if it's a qualifying project. Then the findings are not used to evaluate the project, only the objective standards in the toolkit would be used to evaluate the project. If a project is submitted and it, it doesn't meet, it's not a qualifying project and it would still go through the, the current design review process and those findings would still be used to evaluate the project.
But with, if there are a certain amount of the three thirty buildings. Would the town want to adjust the findings for the properties that wouldn't be under three thirty? Because you're looking at a different environment with these things that are built under three thirty and under thirty five. So would you want to keep the same findings we have for the rest of the building that's done?
So keeping the same findings for buildings in which they're not subject to the legislation?
I mean, those were developed, I don't know how, where or when, but they were developed looking at a certain environment in which the homes. And the buildings, let's say, were going to be built and placed. If you're going into that higher density. And larger buildings and all this in areas, do you still want to use those same findings for the other buildings because the environment? In which they exist is different.
Yeah, I would just say there's no assumption that the buildings are getting bigger or taller or more density at this point with, with SB three thirty or SB thirty five. Because, because we're not. You know, it's, it's meant to match, that part of the implementation is meant to match sort of existing conditions out there. Dense, you know, you could have density bonus, but the findings, I mean. That's, we can, we could take a look at that separately if they're not. Working, but I mean, they're, they're there to allow you the discretion to say whether or not it meets, it fits in or. You know, affects privacy or views or sunlight and use the available evidence to make those determinations, I don't. See the need to adjust the findings for discretionary projects. You know, could they use a refresh? Yeah, I think so, probably if we wanted to dive into that, but I just don't think that's sort of the, that's sort of a separate. Work planner, or it's not, I don't think it's tied to what we're doing here, I would, that would be my answer, I don't think it has any implication on. On, on the objective design and development standards.
Okay, fine, thank you. That's it, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Phil. I'm just going to say that this is a impressive assembly of documents that was put together, I don't know how long they've been working on this. Yeah, but it's cohesive in nature. The, the graphics are excellent for this communication of ideas and standards to. In, inside of each category, so they've got design sites, building types, private front edge architectural designs, it's, it's all very pertinent and. Well thought out, this is as good a bible as I've seen yet, entirety of all of this information. I think the specifics are. Something that we can delve into in future hearings and I'm sure that there will be much more public comment when people become aware of how their particular neighborhood might be impacted or their. Their particular zone might be impacted. I would say that I think T five is a bit too big for Corder Madera, I don't see how it applies. I wouldn't want to have a four or five story building, Corder Madera. Beyond the one that's at town center, but certainly at Corder Madera, old Corder Madera Square, I think that one is considered T five, is that correct?
That's T four, the only ones we have are T four have been identified.
Okay, so. Colorblind, so it's hard to read the colors on the chart, but in any case. It's really well done and I would essentially just say that, you know, the political concerns that everybody has voiced here. Are, are valid concerns that are going to sort of loom large and the overall conversations are going to be really big. And it's, they have to separate those political considerations from the, the direct. Permissions and signage and all that kind of stuff that goes with this. So there's going to be a, a emotional element to this that gets entered into and it's going to be hard to separate that, I think, when we get down further down the road with it. I hope it doesn't run into the same fuel to the fire that the climate plan ran into, so. This is quite well done and I, to Margaret's point, you know, every effort that the town can take to get this into the public realm, I think would be. Well spent.
Yeah.
I don't have any other comments, but.
Appreciate that. Yeah, and I think as you, as you speak to others, if you have that opportunity, by all means. Let people know that they can reach out to us to get more information, I would, I like the idea and the name that we call it, remember it's a toolkit, it's really there intended to be a tool for us to use to have. These discussions, as you, as you mentioned, Peter, there's, you can talk about state laws, but what we're really. Looking at here is a tool to be able to respond or proactively plan for. What our environment is and our regulatory environment is today and is likely to become more of in the future, but that's, those are two different things, right? And it's a tool that also, as we've talked about tonight, which I'm glad, you know, many of the commissioners noted. Can be used to actually get, you know, absence. Can be used to actually get, you know, absence of state laws can get better. Development period, you know, residential development that we want to see in town that somebody could propose and can be used as as just more. More or less guidance, so it's it's a it's a multi. Faceted tool that I think staff can use, commissioners can use, the town can use. For different purposes and objectives and we just have to find the right, you know. The right ways to do that. And as I said, it's, you know, anyways, I so I appreciate that comment. Chairman Chase, just that it's, you know, there are two different things here going on.
Yeah, and so in terms of rollout down here, you're gonna have another meeting in March and then. You're gonna bring it back to the commission at another point. For a study session and then public input and so forth, so there's. I I your timeline inside of this document to me was quite clear and we have to get this thing adopted by the end of the year.
I I would hope we can do it by the summertime, to be honest, so, you know, but we'll see, you know, it it. I want, like I said, I'd like to use this process for. To roll into and be sort of a spark, if we will, for. Get people engaged on the housing element, so. The housing element, again, is gonna be where I think a lot of the concerns about. Additional density and politics and so on and so forth. Come to the fore and we have a lot more work to do on that as well, because there's environmental review that we need to do as well on that piece of it, so. Anyways, it's a. It's a bigger chunk, but yes, I'd like to try to. Condesed it as much as possible to bringing this back for adoption. You know, like we said, March with the working group, probably April with the planning commission for a workshop on the the mapping exercise. And then we'll go back and and try to. Bring it into a norm for zoning ordinance amendment, probably by June. And council in July, that sort of schedule I think would be a good one. Again, just for the phase one, which is really the. Response to the state legislation, you know, you know, this would only apply for those eligible projects. And then and then move into, at the same time, start to move into the outreach for the housing element.
Given that we're in sort of an informal. Hearing tonight, did commissioners have any other commentary that they want to add at this point?
Question, Peter. So I kind of see this. For a developer as a kind of a speedway into getting a project going. What, why would a developer not want to come in under one of these? Under one of the legislations, what would be the, is there any drawback for a developer to go through the old process? Of design review as opposed to coming in under. These, this legislation.
So there are affordability requirements, so in order to be an eligible project under SB three thirty, a certain percentage needs to be affordable units. So a developer does trade some potential profits. To do an affordable housing project, so that could be seen as, you know, a downside, but then obviously it does. Positive is it removes a discretion from a process.
Yeah, and and SP thirty five has a has a actually, although we're not subject to that right now. There are a lot of actual, a series of other requirements associated with that, such as. The way the certain hiring practices, labor that is used to build the project, which is the big one, that sort of. I think a lot of gives a lot of pause to some developers of using that piece of legislation, so. There are, yeah, it is a. There are some trade offs.
Okay, and do you foresee, I I mean, this is going back to something that Bob asked at the very beginning. Do you foresee? Any issue or any problem with getting developers to be interested in different? Sites around Corder Madera? To fill the housing need?
Yeah, I mean, the actual development of it, I mean, it's it's absolutely, I mean, that's that's always. All we can do is sort of plan for it and and allow certain. You know, say, these are. These are available sites, I think one thing we could do if we actually wanted to encourage the development and keep pace with. The units that the, you know, the seven hundred and twenty five units and and through that period. Then we could go to a a different model where we use this tool to actually. Streamline the process for developers, even though we don't really need to. So we say we we take a discretion out of our hands. Ourselves and we say, we have a tool that's gonna give us good development that we like. That can work for this particular site or sites. And now we're gonna remove ourselves from a discretionary process because we want to encourage. This particular housing development in this location, so that is an option that I think is certainly on the spectrum of. How we, you know, how we want to deal with the sites in the in the. Housing element piece process, the second phase of implementation. So certainly, it it that's that's one option to encourage, that would encourage. I think be an effective tool of encouraging actually developers to say, oh, well. Now they really have streamlined the process piece of this for us and we don't have to. Right, you know, actually go under the state legislation. Requirements, although, you know, again, we could, we could put in our own rules for certain sites if we wanted to. Have affordability requirements and we do have inclusionary housing requirements that will be, as Martha mentioned in one of the beginning slides. We we will be coming to the commission with our inclusionary. Requirements, which just means that a certain number of units get built, the town already requires that you build certain amount affordable units. So. In any case, that there's, but but that, yeah, to your question, that that would be an option that we could consider if if we wanted to. Streamline. But I do think, you know, and we'll get into the housing opportunity site analysis. And and certainly there are locations where. You know, we'll be talking about. Potential development and and a lot of those areas really come from the general plan. That already lays out the mixed use development. Areas of town along those commercial air corridors and, you know, we have. Only rezoned that Tamil Vista Boulevard section of town to a mixed use district, but there's a. A lot of the other areas also have that. The general plan already allows for housing in those areas, so those are probably some of the areas that we'll be looking at for housing opportunity sites. Which are currently not zoned for for housing.
So, Adam, I appreciate your comments about the response to the developers. And I'm just gonna say in response to Margaret and so forth that. You know, inside of this document are enough standards that you're talking about that could be used for. Review of. Applications that we would get to where. We're not in this argument with developers or with people who say, I want you to appreciate my project for what it is, I think it's beautiful. And we can say it's an ugly duckling and this idea that it's. Is it an ugly duck or is it a thing of beauty, right, so it's it. This document would say what it is that is attractive and and we could live with that. Because we have some standards that say what it is that we like. And I think that's a huge benefit to being able to point to something and say, this is attractive, this is what the design standards are and this is gonna be acceptable. Rather than arguing about, is it a ugly duckling or not? It it's just, it helps us, I think, get a better quality project out of. What's brought before. That's my site when I read all of the. It's like reading the book of pattern language in a way, you know, this is all, it's all in here. I hope, I hope that others see it that way, but. There's no guarantee, Phyllis.
I mean, what you just said, Peter, is that rather than beauty being in the eye of the beholder, beauty is in the eye of the toolkit. That works, that works.
Yeah, exactly, so. Okay.
All right, I got one more thing, I I just, I think when we do go out to the community outreach, it would be really important to kind of understand. Because the first thing I thought of was, you know, why are we, why are we doing this? And then I realized, well, we should have this in place or something else will get developed in these zones that we don't want. It would be kind of, I think, important for maybe to to explain to the community. Why we're doing this and and, you know, if we don't, we could have something that. You know, our planners who are professionals didn't, you know, you're putting this together, spending a lot of time putting something together. To fit within our community. Neighborhoods, so I think just knowing what what the state could mandate. If we don't have something would really help. The community kind of. Digest this this idea. Because, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know too much about the Nevada project, but I was from some of the articles or. Things that I've read, it seems like they built something in an area that probably couldn't. Really support a building or they're going to build, I don't know if it was built yet, I haven't been really following it that much, but. What we don't want is a five story building in the town square, right, we want something that's gonna fit the character of that. Of that application, so I think just knowing. And kind of maybe listing, listing a few things that could happen if we don't have the standards in place could really help out. Getting some more community.
I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, suggestion, thanks.
Okay, so with that said, nobody has their hand up that will will move on to, we'll close this item. And I I I look forward to having more concrete. Discussion about the standards in the next go round and that it's actually a ton of fun, so.
Yeah, and and I agree, fun and. Well, well, you know, at the same time, I think we want to. The big picture is also recognizing just what Commissioner Rizzo said, we don't have anything in place right now, so. We need to, you know, let's not, you know, the perfect is gonna be a challenging thing to get to a perfect where everyone agrees on every standard. But hopefully we can get into a lot of the standards and if there's something really that needs to be adjusted, we can do so and and have those conversations. But also keeping in mind that we want to get to an adoption. Part of the process here, so, thanks.
Thank you guys for this amazing amount of hard work that you've all done here, gotten us.
Yeah, and credit, credit to, you know, Opticos, really, who's the the consultant on this, they're out of Berkeley, right? Martha, yeah, and and they've been, you know, they're really. Good designers, it wasn't an easy project to do this multi jurisdictional sort of process, but. I think they're becoming sort of the leaders in that, in that field and and sort of in designing this, so these types of toolkits, so it's. It's, yeah, I think the graphic work and explanations are just incredibly valuable for us.
So, Adam, is there a way when we, when we talk about the standards or when we want to adopt? Some that we could get hard copies of this?
Absolutely.
Definitely, if anyone wants a hard copy, please want to let me know and we'll make sure to deliver it ahead of the next meeting.
I I realize it's a lot of pages, but it's it's virtually impossible to read it, all those pages on the computer for me.
Yeah, I I hear you, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that said, I would move on to the next item on our agenda, which is commissioner. Reports. I don't know who had a report, Phyllis.
I covered the council meeting last week, do you want me to report that now? Okay, yeah, there are. Couple of things. They adopted a resolution that amended the town council's parking plan on Christmas Tree Hill. They made one parking place larger and the one across the street smaller, is really what it boiled down to after a lot of talking. Next thing was, David Kuhnhardt offered his resignation. He is moving back to Massachusetts, so they're in opening on the council. And it was decided to follow, to fill the vacancy the way they always have in the past, which is by appointment. Under state law, you can do it by appointment or by having an election. David will be leaving in April. And the way it is set up under state law, there could not be an election until. August nineteenth, I think it was, but it was sometime in mid-August, so it will be done by appointment. And then. The state is moving primaries around again, sometimes. On the years when there is a presidential election. The primary will be held in March. Years when there is not. A presidential election, the primary will be held in June. And since our rules and regulations said that the election of council members would be at the time of the primary. We'd have some very strange terms for the members, so after much discussion. It was decided to have it, the elections on the even number years in November. At the time of the general election, remember, state law changed a few years ago that you no longer have off year elections. Also. It changes when the officers are appointed and they'll now be appointed at the first meeting in December. If there's a second meeting, the. Committees, et cetera, would be chosen, otherwise it would be done in the January meeting. But most of the meeting was spent on that. That was the basic part of it and the only other thing in it, which was really following state law and I was surprised that. The rules and regulations didn't say. That our ordinance would follow state law. But the state has now upped the amount of. Money that could, the town manager is authorized to use to settle claims and lawsuits up to fifty thousand dollars. That is without going to the council and that's how it will be from now on. Because it had been less, I don't remember exactly how much it was written into the ordinance, but since the state allows fifty thousand dollars. Todd will now have the authority to make those decisions. That was it.
Okay, very simple, straightforward.
It was a long meeting, but a simple agenda.
Right, was there another meeting between our last meeting and that meeting?
No, this was it.
That was it, okay.
This was it last week and we had met two weeks, we met two weeks ago.
Okay, so very good. Mr. Wolf, would you have anything you want to add?
Only that, just a couple of updates and I said, I mentioned one at the community chat today, just. The Catholic Charities is starting operation of the former America's Best Value In today. So housing for homeless individuals at that site on Casa Buena, that's that's this week and so you'll. Just wanna, we've been keeping the public apprised of that. And the working group is still working on to. Basically. Address issues and concerns and be there for that, those things that may arise and to continue to support. Actually, I think there was a welcome. Welcome committee as well set up by some of our residents, which I think is a, has been a really. Great effort on behalf of our residents to start. Integrating the residents into community, so there's that. We talked about the climate adaptation plan, just for everyone's information. The revision process is underway now, based on the comments we heard, and there will be another public. Public review period, likely mid to end of March. With it going back to the council sometime in April, so just be aware of that. And other than that, I think. That's, that's all I have at this point.
Okay, Phyllis, you have something to ask?
I guess I have something to ask, Adam, you made me think of it, while we're talking about zoning and all this earlier. That site, that was the hotel or motel. Was owned to be a hotel. It is now going to be housing units.
Yeah.
And the thought is to make it permanent, it's, what they're doing now is just a temporary transition.
Right.
Does that mean the zoning has to be changed to that particular lot, or does it remain hotel?
Yeah, well, it's in a commercial zoning district, so the state legislation that created that, the Home Key Project. Basically, or the Home Key Program. Eliminated sort of the local zoning. From consideration, so that's why it was allowed to sort of turn into a, this particular use in a commercial zoning district. That said, so, so, no, it doesn't have to be, it's similar to the apartment building next door, frankly, to that project, that's. Also a residential use, but it's in a commercial district, so it. We would look at it sort of at the, in the same way that it's not consistent with the zoning, but it's legal. And in this particular case, because of the state legislation that declares it so. So, but certainly it is in a zone, in one of the areas that Martha, Martha noted on our general plan is the teal. So it is actually consistent with our general plan, which is maybe even more important than it's being consistent with our zoning. So that's, yeah, just to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Phyllis. With that said. Does anybody have any changes that they want to move to the meeting minutes for February ninth?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Voice vote, aye.
Aye.
Okay, well. Lovely to see you all, so. We'll declare this meeting adjourned, and we can move on to. Other chores for the evening, so thank you very much.
Good to see you all, take, take care, everyone.